Welcome to the May 17th Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lot of crowd here tonight, huh?
Nice.
Lot of people want to talk, I think.
Opening comments, please. Mr. Lombard first.
I'm all set.
Mr. Perrell?
I'm okay.
Same here. Thank you all for coming. First order of business is a Town Administrator Search Committee meeting. I'm handing it over to Chairman Manning. He's going to give us a little overview, and then each of the selectmen will give their thoughts on what they want as a new town administrator, followed by questions from you. You must come to the microphone because the rest of the town can't hear you. If you don't come to the microphone, I'll throw this at you. How's that? I really need you to come to the microphone. We get emails all the time from people sitting there not coming up. It's hard for the town to see. So, we'll open it up with Mr. Lombard's comment on what he likes to see as a town administrator. Oh, wait. I'm sorry. You're going to give an overview first. Sorry.
Greetings. My name is Michael Manning. I'm chairman of the recently appointed Town Administrator Search Committee. Here with me tonight are six other members of our committee, and I'll introduce them and ask them to raise their hands. In the front row, we have Jimmy Ward, who has served on prior committees; Colleen O'Leary, who has served on prior committees; Jennifer McCarthy, served on prior committees as well; not able to be with us tonight, but they told us in advance that they would not be here, are Deb Murphy; Laurie Giardella, she may be late; and Dan Fiori. As I've mentioned, I'm the chairman. We also have Gordy Hall, town resident, and Joe Donovan, is a member of the committee. We were appointed under a special act of the state legislature. This was an act petitioned for by the town back in 1992, and it basically calls for the formation of the committee any time we need or have a change of town administrator within the town. The moderator appointed us in March. We've been meeting since then. We've had three to four meetings to date. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to hear from interested citizens or public groups on things they believe we should consider as we look at and review the resumes being submitted for town administrator. The normal things that we look for are all of the things called out for in the special act. In the special act, which is available online on the town administrator's webpage, called the Town Administrator, on a tab called the Town Administrator Act, it lists all of the things that the town administrator does, and it's the kind of things that you would normally expect of a general manager. They prepare budgets, plans, hire and fire people, they deal with union contracts, non-union personnel, and generally make sure that things run on a budget and with proper planning for both budget and capital expenditures. They are responsible to the Board of Selectmen. We're looking to recruit a candidate who is a working partner with the Board of Selectmen and who's ready to keep both them and the townspeople informed. We realize those are important objectives. But we know that other groups have had past interactions with other town administrators and believe there are things that are important that should be considered, and we're happy to hear your comments tonight on what they are. That being said, we will start reviewing the resumes that we have been collecting on the 1st of June at the end of this month. We expect to be in contact with the top tiers of candidates to get more from them, both verbally and in writing, to assess their competencies, and we expect to have a short list of final candidates to the Board of Selectmen in early to mid-August, in a timeframe that would allow them to, July rather, in order to allow them time to review the candidates and by early to mid-August, sign a contract with the selected candidate. That being said, what we'd like to do is hear from people one at a time, and if we could keep it concise, maybe three to five minutes each. If there is something you believe that we should be considering, we'd be happy to hear your input. We will do that as soon as we hear from the three selectmen what their current priorities relative to a town administrator are, and then we'll open it up to the public in general and look for your added input. With that, I'll turn it back to-
Thank you.
-Mr. Taylor.
Most importantly, from my aspect, is, once we finish, the actual comments you have will be directed towards the Town Administrator Search Committee, which is why we're all here. And by the way, thank you for this great turnout. This is terrific. Mr. Lombard, comment?
We made some tactical errors, especially when we went from selectmen and control of the town to a town administrator. Our first town administrator was Michael Wood, and on the resume, if you looked at his resume, it was absolutely perfect. You couldn't ask for a better resume. Background, education, and it was very, very good. But he was the first town manager, administrator, assistant to board after we switched, and we had major difficulties in the transfer of power from the town administrator to the Board, from the Board of Selectmen to the town administrator. And then we hired one of the, you know, of course, Mark Cullen, and he served the town for 17 years, and he did an excellent job. We even asked him to come back during a personal crisis. It was unbelievable that he came back and served the town again. And when I say he was excellent, he was. He knew everyone, he handled everything, handled the selectmen, and it was just, it was running smooth as silk, as I say. Then Mark stepped down, and we went through the search committee, and then we hired, the council recommended top three town administrators, recommendation, and of course, we had one that, again, had a great resume, service was there, education, you know, lawyer, Harvard grad, and he came on, and then we had major problems with him. The second one behind him was another one that was just recently let go by the board because of a contract-
We have to, we have to-
We have to stay away from it.
Be careful. We have to-
No, I understand.
Okay.
But it was difficult, very good individual, but we just didn't, it didn't, it didn't gel for the board. So now we're looking for someone again, and my, my theory is very simple. This manager has to have total management skills in finance, administration, someone that's got a good head on the shoulders, and someone that's got pride in what he does. And the other one, and the other thing is, a great communicator. He needs a skill set that he can multitask things, especially for the town. I mean, this is 11 million, just under $11 million budget, and so I think if you have someone with a- You trying to settle it down, Mr. Jimmy?
Yep.
We have someone with a multitask individual that can do all these things, he'd be great for the town. Love to get someone that, you know, is from a small town or large, doesn't matter, but if he has these, you know, multitask type of management skills and can manage people. This time, we've got to rewrite the contract because we've got to, the current Town Administrator Act is in conflict with both acts, so, but we don't have to wait for a town meeting to change it. We could do it when we rewrite the new contract, and we know the part that has to be changed. And so we'll make sure that changes. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well said. Mr. Perrell?
Personally, I'm looking for a person that's going to work with the Board of Selectmen. I think it's important that, I don't think it's so important that they, that they're well-versed in, I think they need to be well-versed in municipal finance, but I wouldn't mind somebody that's a little green. I think that the town's small enough where they can, they can learn. Certainly, Mark did that, and did very well. I think they could be mentored at some point by maybe Mr. Perry. I think that somebody that's energetic, young, that's willing to look for grants, technical assistance, things like that, and that's willing to work with the Board of Selectmen. As you know, we had a Town Administrator Act Committee this year, consisting of Jimmy Ward, Steve Smith, and Carol Nelson, who did a great job, and they came back and they made a recommendation to us, and along with the state has said it over and over again that we need to incorporate the act with the charter and have a charter change and fix it, because there were some conflicts there. And it's been recommended that we do that because there is huge flaws in the Town Administrator Act. It's how it's interpreted. That, to me, is a problem. But I think if we have somebody that's willing to work with us and listen to people, talk to people, and work like that, I have no problem with that. I think that's a good way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Perrell. I broke it down into two skills that I'm really looking for. The technical skills, as far as the budgeting, policies, and procedures, we do, but I'd like to see someone who's proficient in budgeting, so that when it comes time for the budget, we do our part, and then the town administrator puts it together. That should be with all the candidates, but that, to me, is sort of number two. Number one is their human skills, how they work with people. I'd love to see someone in here that works very hard with the selectmen, and I've said this before to other search committees, that selectmen come and go, but we really need someone who can also work with people in the town. And we've got to take away the politics of everybody who wants to play politics in this town, because we need a town administrator that can deal with all the people. And I'll use Mark Cullen, because if Mark Cullen were 20 years younger, he could do it over, but he can't. But we need someone that has good people skills, that can basically deal and communicate well with the Board of Selectmen, given the complexities of the Town Administrator Act of '92, which that committee did a great job on, and thank you guys, and Carol, and our town charter. They don't speak, so we have to correct that. But like Richie said, while we correct that, we can do a contract. I will tell you that the Town Administrator Act of '92 supersedes any contract we write, so that's going to be a little difficult, too. But that's what I want, a good communicator. And thank you. I'd like to now open it up to the floor that can talk to the committee, please. Anyone who wishes to come up, please come to the mic.
Given the uneven record that we've had with town administrators, are we sure that a town administrator is what we really want? Or maybe something else that we haven't considered yet?
I would assume we'd have to change the charter, so we can't, that takes a lot of time and a vote.
May I? There's going to be, we are going to have to have a charter committee formed, and that's, that's an elected board that will occur. Probably at the special town meeting, we just didn't have time to get that rolling, and they're going to, you know, we'll have their report ready, what they, what they came up with, and we don't know. I mean, it's, it needs to be fixed. We know that, so.
Sorry. Name, please.
Carl Jenkins, Nahat Road. So, as a follow-up, you know, it, the situation really isn't conducive to a situation that would encourage continuity and security and so forth, that's somebody you might be looking for in a job. How are you going to convince a good candidate that going forward, they're not going to have the same type of situations that we just finished up with, or that differences between you, for example, and, and the town administrator, whoever it might be, will have a more workable arrangement? Communication goes both ways. You know, you want somebody that's good communication, a good communicator to you and to us, but they also need to understand how to deal with what may look like a very difficult situation. So I'm just wondering how you expect to convince somebody that these issues are sort of addressed and that they won't face them again? Thank you.
Next.
Want to handle it?
Next. Don't answer.
Okay. Next. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Manning.
We're not here to answer each comment.
Good question. Is that it? I'd like to answer it. It's a good question. Any other questions? Town Administrator Search Committee?
Call Mark Cullen in. He has to speak.
Mark?
I don't think he hears.
Mr. Cullen, would you give us some thoughts, please? Thank you.
Thank you all for your kind words. I guess I can speak a little bit about some of the skills and qualities that I found successful, being the town manager, town administrator in Nahat. I think all of you touched on most of them, but one of the first qualities I think an administrator needs is be able to listen, not prejudge, to have an open mind, even though what you're hearing is something that you may not agree with. I think the administrator needs to be respectful to the, to the community, and the other issue, I think, is the town administrator needs to understand government and the governance of the town. And that includes, you know, being an advocate for the town employees, allowing department heads to make decisions and support their decisions, to allow committees to do their job and not interfere with their, with their work, and to support their advice when they come to you. I think it's important, it's an important quality. Obviously, you said communication. I think that's probably one of the most important qualities that a town administrator has to have. Not only communicating with the Board of Selectmen, but communicating with the public and being transparent and open as best you can. In terms of municipal finance, I always sort of viewed the town budget like a household budget. Don't spend unnecessarily, don't run up debt, I guess. Fairly fiscally conservative, but I think it's important. It's the townspeople's money, and you need to be careful with it. I think finally, I know that last town meeting, you, there was an article for a large infrastructure, I think $5 million, that's going to preoccupy the next town administrator for a number of years, so maybe you would want to look for someone with some project management skills, or perhaps some engineering skills that could help move that process along. But those are just some of the qualities I think you should be looking for.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. I also had a thought before someone else comes up. I had a thought that maybe the group, your group could make a decision, make up some scenarios, Mr. Manning, on, I'm sure the-
Roz, may I finish this for a second? Oh.
Some scenarios that you have observed in the town, and see how he responds to that. I thought, oh, he or she, I'm sorry. How they respond to that. Just a thought. Sorry, Roz.
Okay. I agree with everything that Mark said. I have one additional thing that I think is very important. Whoever it is, it should be very familiar with the town before they're even hired. I don't think it's bringing somebody in from way out or whatever that doesn't know this town, doesn't know how it runs, should be even considered. You know, hopefully, we can find somebody from within. All right?
Thank you.
If not, let me conclude by saying, we hear your comments, we've discussed many similar thoughts within the committee. We recognize them as part of the heartfelt desires of the town, and we'll do our best to see that we can fill all the needs that we've outlined and that you've enunciated along with the priorities mentioned by the selectmen as we review the resumes, and we'll look forward to talking to you later as we make announcements on the short list of candidates that come out of that. For employees or department heads who are here, who think of something afterwards that they want to say, there is a form that was available from Mary Ellen Schuman that you can fill out and send back to the committee if you want to give input later on. If there's someone who thinks of a like comment later, feel free to contact Mary Ellen, get a form, and submit it. If there are no other questions, I think our committee will leave you to your business. It looks like you have plenty on your agenda to keep you busy, and we thank you for the time to have this conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Thank you, everyone, for volunteering. It's not easy. Appreciate it. Before we go on, let's approve the minutes from Wednesday, May 2nd. Okay. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minutes of 5:318. Say it. Discussion?
It looks fine. It's, it's all the executive session minutes.
I reviewed it, so. Questions, bud? No? All those in favor? Aye. Nails? Aye. Nails vote. Opening comments. Citizens Forum. I'll take a big leap here and figure the Citizens Forum has to do with Town Administrator Report, Northeastern Liaison Committee. I've taken a leap. I would like, those who would like to have input into that, we'll do it now as Citizens Forum, because once we get into it, it's lengthy, and that'll be in our business meeting. So if you have comments, any, any comments, Citizens Forum is now open. Okay. All right, so everyone had a shot. Everyone had their turn. Okay. Town Administrator Report, please.
Is that what you want next on the agenda, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, 4A. Thank you.
Well, I think, you just want my general report of updating your activities? Is that what you're looking for? Do you want to get it to Eastman? I'm a bit confused.
No, I want on 4A, Northeastern Liaison Committee-
You want Mr. Cullen to come first, you mean?
Before Mr. Cullen comes up, it has to do with a grant, and I would like to read the agreement made with the Board of Selectmen. And by the way, thank you to everyone who raised that money. It was not easy. Everyone worked real hard. But I'd like to read the agreement so everyone in town will understand. It's lengthy, but I'll get through it. This is a gift to the Board of Selectmen. Gift agreement pursuant to General Law Chapter 44, Section 43A.
53, Mr. Chairman.
What did I say, 53?
It's 53A, sir. Mr. Chairman.
You're right. Whereas the Nahat Preservation Trust Inc., NPT, a Massachusetts nonprofit corporation with a principal office at 41 Valley Road, Nahat, Mass. 01908, wishes to make a gift to the town of Nahat by and through the Nahat Board of Selectmen to assist the town with the evaluation of land that the town may seek to acquire located at East Point so-called property. And whereas, NPT has agreed to provide the town with a grant of funds under General Law 4453A, I got it right this time.
I'm going to read this, this is easy for you to think. Read that one. That's the one you're going to sign tonight, if you sign it, that is. Mr. Chairman, the one I handed to you is the, is the final document.
Oh, oh, things out of my scratch.
Yes, I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, you read that one.
Same thing, but less scratching.
Same thing, but a little different. Right.
Whereas, oh, sorry. Whereas, NPT has agreed to provide the town with a grant of funds under General Law 4453A in the amount of $67,500, with the said funds to be placed into a gift account under General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A. And now therefore, the town and NPT agree as follows. NPT hereby provides the town treasurer with the sum of $67,500 under General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A, to be deposited by the treasurer in an interest-bearing account, gift account, to be expended at the direction of the Board of Selectmen exclusively for the following purpose. To authorize a town administrator upon and with the approval of the Board of Selectmen under Nahat Town Administrator Act, Act 9, hyperlink www.nahat.org, to hire and engage James Masterman Esquire of Greenberg, Tarig, Boston, Mass., to provide the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator with independent advice on all matters involving the interests that the town may seek to acquire in the property under the provisions of General Law Chapter 79 or otherwise, which engagement may include, A, the hiring of Stephen Foster of Lincoln Property Company as an expert appraiser, subject to the vote required below, to provide a confidential appraisal to the Board of Selectmen under General Law 79, Section 7A, of the potential value of said property and the potential interest that it may be acquired, with the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen to authorize the parameters of the appraisal as to the property interest to be av- to provide a confidential appraisal to the Board of Selectmen under General Law 79, Section 7A, of the potential value of said property and the potential interest that it may be acquired, with the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen to authorize the parameters of the appraisal as to the property interest to be evaluated and to authorize the actual engagement of the appraiser. And B, the hiring of other independent experts, including but not limited to, a coastal wetlands expert and a land surveyor to provide reports and plans regarding the property and such property interest with the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen to authorize the actual engagement of such consultants. To authorize the town administrator upon and with the approval of the Board of Selectmen under Act Number 9, to engage other attorneys to view matters associated with disagreement and any work performed under disagreement with that cost not to exceed $5,000. The gift funds may be used by the town up to $67,500 to pay for the reasonable cost incurred by the town for the purposes set forth above, but for no other purpose without NPT's approval. Such payments shall be made to the town with the approval of the Board of Selectmen from the gift account pursuant to written invoices received by the Board of Selectmen from the various consultants who are retained in accordance with the terms of disagreement. Non-attorney contracts shall be in writing and shall be far not to exceed amounts. NPT may but shall not be required to replenish the gift account if there is any shortfall in amounts it deems are appropriate to provide additional funds to the town to support its evaluation of the property, in which case this agreement shall be modified by majority vote of the Board of Selectmen to authorize receipt and expenditure of the additional gift funds. Once the Board of Selectmen notifies the treasurer in writing that all outstanding costs and fees detailed above have been fully paid and notifies the treasurer of the amount of the costs and fees, then the gift account shall be closed and any excess funds remaining therein shall be returned to NPT or its written assign. At any time after December 31st, 2018, NPT shall have the right to request the return of the funds held in the gift account, not expended or required, for costs properly incurred hereunder prior to the date of such request. Any interest accrued under the gift account may be used for any purpose allowed under this agreement. Any report or plan or advice generated shall be for the sole benefit of the town by and through the Board of Selectmen and shall be maintained as confidential by the attorneys and the consultants and shall not be disclosed or shared except to the Board of Selectmen and to the attorneys specifically engaged under this agreement and with a determination as to whether, to release any, to release confidential documents shall be determined as provided far under state law and with any waiver of attorney-client privilege to rest solely with the Board of Selectmen. It is hereby acknowledged the town shall have the right, but not the obligation, to use the funds, including any accrued interest obtained hereunder, for the stated purpose and that the town shall not be deemed to have waived its right to use the funds or deemed guilty of latches if the town delays in using the funds. It is expressly understood and agreed by and between the town and NPT that accepting SUD's funds and by executing this agreement, neither the town nor the Board expressly or impliedly, which I never knew was a word, makes a representation or a promise that has endorsed or will endorse a particular course of action or will recommend a particular course of action to town meeting. Comments, gentlemen? Mr. Lombard?
Mr. Chairman, maybe before you go to the comments, Boyd, you may want to hear a presentation from the chairman of the Northeastern University Liaison Committee to give you additional information. Then maybe at that time, you'll have a better understanding of some thoughts.
Okay. I'll have Mr. Cullen and then you can give us some input.
If you, if that's yours. But I think, Mr. Cullen, it would be wise for Mr. Cullen to come forward.
Thank you. Again, I'm Mark Cullen. I'm the chair of the Northeastern University Liaison Committee. The other committee members include Paula Devro, Bobby Joe Blair, Nancy Cantalmo, and Jeff Musman. We've been meeting, we've had, I think, three meetings since the inception of the committee. We've had an opportunity to interview Mr. Masterman, who we feel is a preeminent lawyer in this field, and also Mr. Foster, who is a highly recognized appraiser. The committee feels strongly that the information that could be sought from this endeavor would be very beneficial to the Board and to the town of Nahant as you make decisions in the future. The committee strongly recommends that the Board accept this agreement and we look forward to working with you as we go through the summer. And I also want to mention that Keep Nahant Wild, under the umbrella of the Nahant Preservation Trust, has done an unbelievable job raising these funds and I am so proud to be part, you know, to help move this forward. So thank you for all your effort and I hope that the Board can agree to accept this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Thank you, Mark. Mr. Perry, your opinions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been working with the chair of the Liaison Committee quite extensively on a host of issues on behalf of the Board of Selectmen regarding this issue. They provided to me the end of last week, a draft copy of a grant. For those not familiar, Chapter 44, Section 53A allows either the Board of Selectmen or certain department heads to accept gifts or grants and they have to make the decision whether to accept it and to accept it whether they agree or disagree with certain conditions. And that's certainly within the purview tonight of the three of you as the Board of Selectmen. So you have, in my opinion, statutory authority to accept it if you so desire to do so. The original draft given to me, I had some concerns about. And from my experience, when gifts or grants are given to municipalities, traditionally you can't accept the money. In my opinion, at the original draft given to me, I was a little concerned that we had to ensure that the government of the town of Nahant was in charge of these funds and that they would make the final decisions as to how to engage and go forward. And that's the role, in my opinion, of the Board of Selectmen. As a result of some of my concerns, I contacted our own attorney from Copeland and Page, Elena Quirk, and had a lengthy discussion with her. She was kind enough to review the draft given to me on behalf of the Board. She went forward and made several modifications to it to ensure that the town government is overseeing as we, the gift, if you will, as we proceed. And the document that you have read to the public here has ensured that and has the recommendation of town council through Copeland and Page. I've had dialogue with Mr. Cullen as well, as I indicated, and it's my understanding that his Liaison Committee, which is established by this Board to guide and advise the Board of Selectmen, has, I believe, and I'm sure Shaker said unanimously supported this, as I understand that. And based upon that, and I have reviewed this carefully, the document before I came before you, Mr. Chairman, to the members of the Board of Selectmen, is my recommendation as your town administrator that you should accept this grant. I believe it's a first step in the issue associated with East Point and the issues going on up there. And we don't know where we're going here, but I can report to you that the $67,000 is being considered. The town is really difficult in having funds there. Really, anything we try to take to do this would be, cause us some financial problems going forward. And bottom line to it is, it's a wonderful gift for the town. The Selectmen are in charge of the project. The, Mr. Masterman will report to the town administrator and the Selectmen. And it is my recommendation to the Board that you accept this grant.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Boyd, Mr. Lombard?
I move, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the presentation and the contract as presented.
Second? I'll second it for discussion. Okay, discussion? I'm a little confused. The Preservation Trust is hereby providing the town treasurer with a sum of $100,000. Why, what has changed, Jerry?
The original dra, you're right, Enzo. The original draft was $100,000. However, the document that, and I'll give this right back to you, the Preservation Trust, I guess, or I should say the Liaison Committee, really, not the Preservation Trust. The Liaison Committee has reviewed that. It's their belief they can get this job for, done for around 67, as opposed to 100,000. So that's why the numbers have changed.
So they think they can get it done? Well, how come, this is the first I've seen of this.
Well, I, I don't even know how to respond to that. I thought I reported to you that the other day, but maybe I didn't. My apologies for that.
First I've heard of it. The contracts I have in front of me, well, and what bothers me is, NPT may, shall, but shall not be required to replenish the gift account?
I, I would...
I think $100,000 will go pretty quick.
It very well may. First off, I would suggest...
Who's going to pay for it after that? Can you, can you answer that?
I think we don't know the answer to that question yet. I think the first step is, from my experience at least, I believe the $67,000 will do the following. It will give us some legal advice on how to proceed and the real goal of this grant is to get an appraisal of the property up there. It's very expensive to do these things. I have some familiarity with Lincoln Properties from my prior experience. They're a reputable entity. And if we don't take this grant at this stage of the game, I'm not aware of where within the budget I could find funds, if it's the wish of the Selectmen, to appraise the property. My instincts tell me that it would be good to know from a policy perspective, what is the value of that property? I know, I don't know the answer to that question. And I don't think really anybody in this room tonight knows the answer to that either. So for us to have an opportunity to determine that dollar amount without spending taxpayer funds, I think is a good idea.
So we do have the money to do the appraisal and we should have done it a while ago. I disagree with you on that.
Okay.
We, I talked to the town accountant today and she said we have plenty of legal money and we can do a reserve fund transfer to do it for the Board of Selectmen. And according to KP Law, Elena Quirk, she said, point blank, the appraisal should cost between $5,000 and $7,000.
Well, what we will do when we do this, we put it out, we'll bid it. I mean, it's not something, it's not like something we're going to just write a check for, but we will determine through the procurement process of how much this will cost, so we'll go from there.
There is no procurement process with an attorney, Jerry?
You do not have to go, are you talking attorney or the appraisal now?
Even the appraiser. Once the attorney, once the attorney hires that person, the attorney can pretty much hire whoever they want.
No, not under this grant agreement. This grant agreement has to be approved, with the utmost respect to you, Enzo, this grant agreement must be approved by the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator. That is not accurate.
But you're saying, Mr. Masterman is going to hire?
Only with the approval of the Board of Selectmen. It's in the document.
It's not procurement. When you say you're going to hire Mr. Foster as an appraiser, that's not procurement, is it, Jerry?
You can't, state law, you do not have to go through the bid process, but you can go through the bid process. And it's my intention to try to do that to protect the interests of the community.
No, okay. I'm not really, I'm really not comfortable with this. I don't see, personally, I don't see, and I'm not afraid to take a gift of money from them, I will tell you that, but I want to know who's going to control it.
The Board of Selectmen, yes.
And I just have a real issue with that because there's too many holes in this. $67,000 from $100,000. There's numbers flying all over the place and I didn't see the, I don't have a copy of the contract. Did you get a copy of it, Richie? The original, the contract, the $67,000 contract? No.
The, I can, I can report to you that that contract was worked on as late as 6 o'clock tonight to clean it up. So it was one of those things, the Liaison Committee met Tuesday night and there was a lot of work to be done, as I indicated to you in my presentation, that I was not comfortable with certain elements of it. I think we cleaned it up, at least for my satisfaction, certainly, you know. And at the end of the day, I can only report to you what I believe is in the best interest of the town, but by all, you know, there's no question. The Board of Selectmen, this is your authority. If you, you're uncomfortable with it, that's certainly your prerogative and your right to, you know, vote accordingly.
I'm not comfortable with this process, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm not com, I'm comfortable with anybody that wants to come forward and do an eminent domain and buy it, you know, with, without hurting the town.
Well, I want to be crystal clear. There's no eminent domain on the table right now.
Well, this, Mr. Masterman is an eminent domain lawyer.
He has experience in eminent domain, that's correct, but that doesn't mean we are going to do eminent domain. I want to be crystal clear on that. All this is doing tonight is a conversation of getting some legal advice and the capacity and ability to do an appraisal. And that's all we're talking about tonight. There's nothing about eminent domain, conservation easement rights, buying or selling property, that is not on the table tonight. This is strictly, we need legal assistance and what's the value of the property up there? That's all that's on the table with this grant tonight.
So I'll have a question for Mark and...
Sure.
Did I see that right there? Did you interview Elena Quirk by any chance? You did. So you felt that this gentleman was better than her? How long did you interview her for?
So we met, one of the first meetings we had, we met with Elena Quirk and with Jim Masterman. The gift agreement that you're looking at was originally a form that Elena Quirk had done. I took a stab as vice chair of the Liaison Committee.
This right here?
That document, yes.
That's not hers?
She provided a draft and an initial draft and then what I did was I revised it. I was the one that put in the $100,000, really as a placeholder, because we weren't sure the amount. And then when the amount came back, that draft was turned over to the town and that draft was then provided to Ms. Quirk, who added some things that I admit I took out. And when we got it back, we were comfortable with it and we changed the, we changed the amount. I mean, the $100,000 was really just there as a placeholder. It wasn't there to signify anything. And the costs that we put in were the costs that we thought as a Liaison Committee that we could get the job done with Attorney Masterman and with the appraiser. And these are really just the first steps. These are really just to get information and unfortunately, it costs money to get information and that's what, that's what this gift agreement is for.
Has Mr. Masterman been paid at all? He hasn't. So there's no conflict there? He hasn't been hired by NPT? So, and you can, this is not Elena Quirk's. Grab, this is, right here. I get, I have hers right here. This is not hers. I'll tell you that, so.
I can re, I'm...
Pretty enough.
Okay. I want to be clear, though. The draft that Mr., the chairman just read to the citizens here is from Elena Quirk. It came to me directly. What Mr. Taylor has in front of him, I don't know what, I don't know what you have, but what Mr. Taylor has, has been approved by Elena Quirk and based upon my dialogue with her to ensure that the Board of Selectmen have the sole authority to handle these funds if you decide to accept the funds under Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Take this. This is the one I got.
Okay.
That's from who?
Give that to Jerry. Is that from her?
Where did this come from?
That's what I was emailing.
From who?
From Jerry.
Elena, from where? The attorney?
I thought you said Elena Quirk.
Email from Jerry.
Can I, I'd have to look at what he's, I don't know who he's talking to.
I mean, I just find, you know, this is the sort of stuff that happened...
This was, okay.
This is the sort of stuff that has happened in the past with the Board of Selectmen. You give us this stuff at the last minute and the wharf, I'll use the wharf as an example, and it turns around and we get blamed for it. You understand? So I want to make sure that the NPT is not, there's no conflict with them. I want to make sure that, you know, I don't understand why it says $100,000 there and $67,000, it's changed and I didn't see that.
I, I think I've answered that. With regard to the conflict issue you raised, I took Ms. Attorney Quirk's questions, I posed them to the... Quirk's questions, I posed them to the Northeastern University Liaison Committee, they gave me the answers that were sufficient, that they weren't in conflict. You now also asked similar questions of the chair in front of everybody here. He's answered, you know, that they haven't paid him, that they haven't engaged with him, and whatever other questions you want. I take Mr. Cullen at his word, who's got a great reputation in this community, and, again, I, I do the best I can on behalf of the board for you, and it's certainly your prerogative to vote the way you deem appropriate, but it still has my strong recommendation to accept the grant as your town administrator.
So is that from, is that from Elena Quirk?
I don't know the answer to that question. I just don't know, Enzo.
Well, you emailed it to me, Jerry.
I, I'm not gonna say I didn't. There was a lot of drafts flying around that were cleaned up, but I am telling you that the draft, not the dra, uh, the document you have before you tonight is from Elena Quirk. It has her legal approval, representing the interests and the wishes of the Board of Selectmen, and I did transfer a host of draft documents, and I certainly believe that I probably did send this to you, but it was a work in progress. It's difficult, that's why you have a town administrator. A lot of technical work has to go, and we have to be careful not to violate, as you well know, the open meeting law, so we, we're careful on certain things here. So is it possible you may not have got the final version? I, I certainly can see that, my apologies, but I can assure you that at six fifteen, I was in here cleaning up some of the draft, working in conjunction with the chair or the Liaison Committee to get the final verdict, and that's why I handed it to the chair for him to read.
Okay. The other question I have is, after that money runs out, who's gonna pay for the attorney and-
We will not. I can assure you, as your town administrator, when the money runs out, we will not incur any more liabilities. The document is prepared in such a manner that additional grants from the NPT, if they so desire, could come forward, and then, therefore, if you're interested, you could accept it, and we'll have to make a judgment call at the time, depending upon how the incidents occur. I am assuring you, as a pretty strong financial guy, I will not incur a liability on behalf of this town under any circumstances. I promise you that.
I'm done. I mean, I just, you've answered all my questions.
Um, my turn.
Go ahead.
As new chairman, there are two things I wanna tell the town. Number one, I am not N O T gonna be accused of violating the open meeting law, ever. That means that communication between, among the three of us, correct word, may not, this may be a victim of that, but it's not gonna happen. I'm not gonna call the two selectmen and talk about things because it's against the law. I've had two people in town say to me, "Don't you people talk?", and the answer is absolutely not. It has to be done in open session, full transparency, as I've been saying for two months to you people, and that's the way it's going to be. I met with the committee Tuesday night? Tuesday night. And it was a wonderful meeting, it was well done, they brought me up to speed. As chairman, I am going to do that. I am not going to then tell the two other people over the phone what happened. We have to wait till the next meeting. Now, at the next meeting, which happens to be tonight, the discussion came up about, from one of the members, about the actual number versus what Paula had said, the hundred thousand. Sounded like, it sounded like a good idea to me, but I was a guest, but I did open my big mouth and say, "Sounds good." So that's where that's left. I also worked directly with the town administrator at length to make sure that it was Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen. Because I wanted to eliminate the talk around town that the, the Nahat Preservation Trust and the Keep Nahat Wild are running the town. They're not. The Board of Selectmen are running the town. You get elected, you can vote me out anytime you want, you can then run the town. We have to have someone run the town, and I also will tell you that I became, I took, set up contact with Northeastern Lawyer. Hi, I'm the new, I'm the new boss here, plain and simple. I will be in touch with you, and I'm telling you the truth. I called him today. Actually, he called me back, we're playing phone tag, just to keep communication lines open. But everything that happens, other than executive session, will be forwarded through Mr. Cullen and his chairman, or through his group, if I can make their meeting. And that's how I want this town to run, and that's how we should. So I'm looking at this as, first of all, I worked at length with Mr. Perry, and he was saying, you know, rah rah rah, and I was saying rah rah rah, but it now reads to me sufficiently, this is a good deal. I consider it a good deal. It's a fact-finding mission, period. Mr. Cullen said last night at length, "We don't know what's next." Mr. Perry just said it. So I, I am voting to accept this. Thank you.
Motion's been made?
No, no. Can I speak on the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, go.
No, I, I heard the change about the hundred to sixty-seven, and that's simple, you know, they were putting the numbers in, and they estimated that. And again, the town's not paying for this. This money is coming from the generosity of the groups that raised the money, and I'll be honest with you, you know, this is like a first step, you know, and I think it's a well-intentioned, and a well-needed step that we need to do, because-
It's time to get together.
This-
And do it right.
Northeastern's not going to stop. They have no plans of stopping, ceasing, or nothing. They're gonna go through with this. I mean, it was just Congressman Moulton, we talked to him, Tom Costin, and he asked, we asked him to rather let, and he did, and they have no intentions of moving to Atlanta or anywhere else. They're gonna continue on building in, up there in East Point. And I'm convinced this is phase one. The sixty thousand square foot building is, is phase one. Believe me, I believe, and I, you know, they have other plans for that place, and it's like, it's gotta be stopped, and it just, you know, we just- And I'm gonna do everything possible, and I think this is a good idea, that the people are raising the money. We don't have to go into raise the money, okay, and go for an override or anything like this, and in order to get our facts correct, get the numbers, you know, the assessment, it's a step in the right direction, but we need to take these steps to get prepared, because this is not going away, people, and we have to fight them tooth and nail, okay? And I, I really, you know, I, I don't want no meetings with them, because they just, they ju, they're convinced that they can beat us, and I'm convinced we can beat them, okay?
Okay. Question? I'll call the question.
Roll call.
Roll call. Mr. Lombard.
Aye.
Mr. Barrell.
Uh, I'll go aye with reservations.
I want, I want, I, I can tell you right now, I am not happy with what I received by email in a contract.
Vote on the vote!
Okay? So it's aye with reservations, period. Please don't yell out. This is a meeting. This isn't a yelling session. Um, I, I, I vote aye. No reservations. Mr. Cullen?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if, now that you have the vote, I would ask the document, the document I provided, would you get the signatures of, of your three board members on the document, please? There was a signatory on the last page, please. You'll see that.
Do I get to sign first?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. The chairman always gets to sign first.
I'm so happy.
(inaudible) again, along the line is, ladies and gentlemen, the section check is sixty-seven thousand five.
You can assign this, as you said.
No, I know.
I wanna say thank you, Mark, and for the people that raised that money. That was good. (inaudible). I'm the senior man. He keeps telling me he's the senior man, it kills me. You get up and say something, and people clap. I don't get it. (laughing). Let me answer. Again, before we move on to the town administrator report, Keep Nahat Wild, fantastic job, and I, I plan to keep communication open through Mark, Mark's group, thank you, and through the, the Keep Nahat Wild, I guess they have a group that meets, but, um, we have to, if you can just li, listen to an old guy say one more thing, we have to eliminate all the politics and move forward as a group. We have to. All right? Thank you. Mr. Barrell wants to say something.
I just think that, and I, I do appreciate all the hard work that they've, they've committed themselves to. I absolutely want, before any meeting, information, I don't want it the way I received it tonight.
But it was in, it was in process, Mr. Barrell.
I'm sorry.
It is not, as GM and I was in total control of it, it was in process, and, and I'm not gonna make phone calls because it's against the law.
Emails.
No, I'm not gonna do emails either.
The town administrator can.
We can go, the town administrator's a part-time person.
I'm sorry, I disagree with you.
Well, I disagree with you.
It's interesting, it's watching, isn't this one of the last part, Mr.?
No, it's just that if you, if you don't get the information, Colleen, how do you make a decision in a split second?
(inaudible) the process, it is the process, and then it's the final copy.
The final copy, I didn't even, I didn't even get to see it. That's a problem.
Just keep thinking-
All right. We're gonna move on, please. Yes, you all have your opinions, thank you, and I know, but let's move on. Town administrator report, please.
Uh, okay. I think, Mr. Moderator, if I may, if I may, if I'm not mistaken, I would suggest to you, Mr. Moderator, we talk about, we have town council, Mr. Scripp with us tonight. I think the next thing to talk about, and then, is probably the cemetery easement grant that the town council's gonna report to the selectmen on, under four C. Mr. Scripp.
I was asked to prepare an opinion regarding the, I was asked to render an opinion regarding the severability of the parcel that contains Ellwood Chapel within Green Lawn Cemetery in order to set the foundation.
Can't hear? Let them all read first, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, would you consider a five-minute recess, maybe?
Five-minute recess, please.
Maybe that's the best approach. Let them clear up. Let him clear up.
We're unresolved.
All right, let's go.
We can talk some more.
Mr. Chairman. I can see why people don't want...
I can see why your problems with town administrator, it's not just her.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, God, help me.
Okay, moving on, please. Town administrator report.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, thank you. I'd like to turn it over to the town council. He's going to give a briefing to the board regarding a preservation easement at the Ellingwood Chapel. I can report to you that there were some serious challenges with this preservation easement. The concern which Mr. Scripp will explain to you was, there's an opportunity for a grant, but the issue was whether we had to put restrictions on the entire cemetery versus just the plot right around Ellingwood Chapel. And I want to commend town council for doing a great job. He's done, he's going to report to you what he did, and I think you'll be pleased with his report.
Lynn Spencer came to us a few months ago, not long before a town meeting, asking if we could agree to at least provide an intention to allow the state to put an easement essentially on Green Lawn Cemetery for the benefit of improving Ellingwood Chapel, in Ellingwood Chapel only. So my concern with Jerry along, as well, was, well, do we have to inhibit the entire cemetery when only the chapel is being benefited? So with working with the assistant assessor, Sheila Hamilton, we came up with an older document that shows that Elling, that Green Lawn Cemetery is actually a series of separate parcels that are all just sort of owned by the town. So we were able to come up with a deed that pinpoints this plot of land that contains the chapel. And it goes about 110 feet along by 220 feet wide, however you look at it. So it's a rectangle. So with that language that we got from an 1895 deed, we were able to render an opinion that says that we can restrict the preservation, the preservation restriction only to that particular parcel. Now, let me make it extremely clear. That's not tonight's meeting. That's for another meeting that we have to have pursuant to town meeting vote that was taken a few weeks ago that requires us to give two weeks' notice to the public and whatnot before we actually agree to the preservation restriction. And that's only if we are offered a grant by the state. And none of that has happened yet. Tonight is only to inform you that we were able to pinpoint just one small portion of Green Lawn Cemetery as the object of the restriction, and then we move forward from there. It's as simple as that. Again, we're not committing ourselves to do anything tonight. It's just a matter of informing you folks that we are able to restrict it to that one small lot.
How much is the grant for?
I don't know. That's Lynn Spencer's side of the coin. She can give you a better idea as to what that is. And again, we don't have to argue to anything if we, at the end of the day, don't want to.
To answer your question, we're not quite sure what the grant is yet. That's why, this is the first process of this. But the recommendation I'm going to give you is to go, to sign off the documents the town council is going to give you. And the, this preservation restriction basically would be just a lot of land. I don't know, do you have a map of, do you have the map with you?
I understand.
Yeah. It's just, it's just a lot of, right around the, right around the chapel only. And the rest of, as an example, one of the concerns we had was, in the future, you may not be able to, if we were to do the whole cemetery, if a decision was made to build a mausoleum, as an example, that we may not be able to do it. But we protected that. Doesn't mean you're going to do it, just means the option is still available. That's all, so...
If we were to sign the preservation restriction, it would give the Mass Historical Commission the right to essentially veto a project that we might want to perform in the cemetery or on that particular piece of property. It is divided in between, it'd end up into major versus minor revisions. And, but it would give the state a right, a property right, essentially, to come on and make changes or demand that the town do so. That's why we need a town meeting vote.
I'm not in favor of this at all. If I don't know the numbers, the grant, the amount of the grant, I'm not willing to give up the chapel and the area.
Okay.
For right away, whatever, it just, it just doesn't make sense.
And we're not, we're not doing that.
We're not doing that tonight.
That's not what's happening tonight. That's not what's happening tonight.
Yeah, but you asked us to sign a document.
No, there's no document for to sign.
Oh, my apologies. I thought there was a document to be signed.
That's not until the agreement actually comes to fruition.
My apologies. I thought there was...
Just to inform you that this is what's happening.
We need, we need to get all the information, because that's, you're talking about, you know, that chapel is just, that is...
Yeah. I...
It's like the town's...
Right. Dan, what do we, I thought we were signing documentation. That's my mistake then.
No, that's, that's the agreement that the, or somebody would have to sign. Now, it's, today is just to inform you folks to what's happening in the background, to let you know that we've made progress. But the agreement doesn't have to be signed until we're actually...
Until we actually know the numbers and...
Right, exactly. Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
No, we would never, I would never ask you to sign the document that you're not sure of.
Okay.
The numbers would be there at that time.
That chapel is sacred land. The town, very sacred.
One, one thing that was suggested to be added to the letter that I now am having reservations about is that another sample from past, past occurrences contain this language. And I'll take it out if you think it's required. I wrote in the letter, that's only draft form, it's not been sent. "On behalf of the town, by this letter, I confirm the Board of Selectmen's intention to record a permanent preservation restriction and maintenance agreement on parcel two within Green Lawn Cemetery." Now, I can take that out. I don't have to put that in there. And if the board's uncomfortable with that, I'm happy to do so. And the letter can stand on its own thereafter.
We should wait and see.
I, I, I told this...
Okay. In that case, I will take out that language. I'll leave the rest of the letter like it is, not obliging us to do anything, nothing. But I'll take that part out so there's no confusion later on down the line, for the reasons that were expressed by Reggie.
Yes, I will.
Oh, is this on the subject?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Susan.
Susan Snow, Two Valley Road. I am the chairman of the cemetery committee, and this is the first I've heard of this. Apparently, there was an email sent to me late this afternoon, which I did not receive. I was wondering if there'd be time for my committee to have a meeting and go over some of this so we could present our opinion to the board. Would that be possible?
I would recommend that you reach out to Lynn Spencer first and work with her, and then call my office and we'll coordinate from there. I think that would be a good first step.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Susan.
So that, that, given the concerns by Ms. Snow, that doesn't prevent us from, or me, from signing this letter. It doesn't, again, doesn't obligate us to do anything.
Right.
It just sets, it sets the table for something later.
Thank you. 4D, Mr. Perry?
I think, Mr. Chairman, maybe 4B first. I think, if I, 4B, as I understand it, this is being just provided for you tonight. I think the intent, as I understand, the custom of the board is to give it to the selectmen tonight. You can review it. And if there are modifications to any of this, we're going to hopefully get this done by the end of the fiscal year. And so for tonight, I think it's just an FYI, as I understand it, and hopefully we'll vote for this at a later time.
Right.
So, it's for your information.
My first year here, we voted in August. My second year, we voted in the first meeting in July, so we have some time.
Yes.
Suggest that we look this over for appointments. Anyone who wishes for one of the appointments, just let us know, or we will keep them as they are. Thank you.
Have we sent out letters to everyone, ask them if they're, would like to be reappointed?
What has, I'll be frank with you. What has been the custom in the past? Is that, that's a lot of letters, but I didn't know, did they do that?
Well, you know, usually in the past, we send out letters to make sure people that are on the list.
You must have hundreds of letters there.
Unless you can have the department heads review it with them, and you just, department, you know, you, you go through with the...
I could certainly check with the departments, maybe with your permission.
Save you, you know, save you, I mean, like the police officers.
Right, right.
Firemen, I mean.
I'm going to have, hopefully, the next, yeah.
Town hall staff.
My intention in the next couple of weeks is to have a staff meeting of department heads, so I can put that on the agenda, right? I mean, we can discuss if that's all right.
Yeah, of course, the other ones...
And obviously, if any of you people have any, you know, other people you want to, I mean, please tell me. I mean, I don't know what you want to do.
What usually happens?
Yeah, just review it.
Will notify you prior to our next meeting, which is when?
We, I don't know yet. We do have a meeting, we have borrowing. We have to have maybe a special meeting to do some borrowing around, as I explained this to the chair, around June 20th, I think it is. But I think we have a meeting around June 20th, 13th in that range, 20th and maybe the 27th. But I don't, we haven't determined how many, we don't want to meet all that. But I do know we have to meet, do some borrowing, and you have to sign up for the...
Our meeting, which is what, what's that, third week?
Well, the 20th was with our financial advisor. I do know we're going to meet around the 20th.
Is that a Wednesday?
Yes. We could do other things at night, yes. I mean, yeah.
June 20th will be our next meeting, and we'll be on our summer schedule.
Could be, unless something else comes up, right. But I think that's, that's a good three-week skip or something, maybe even...
We'll give you time, but we'll get back to you on this.
Right, there's other issues, yeah. Okay.
Is this on the computer?
Yes.
Did you send it out to us?
No, not electronic. I can do that, though. I'll take care of it.
Yeah, so we can...
Yep. You want to, you want electronic version?
Well, then we can send back you our answer.
Sure, I'm fine with this. I don't need it, Jerry. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure the board is aware. I did not receive that till this afternoon after town hall closed. I have made some changes and corrections to the list on the fire department, and have forwarded them back to town hall. So the list on the fire department is going to be marginally different from what you have listed there.
Okay.
What are the changes, Chief?
A new addition that I'm putting forth for a recommendation that has been sent to Mr. Perry, probably since he's checked his computer, and just some, one addition to the fire station committee, a member who's been on the committee but was not on the list, David Doyle, and just making some other corrections on email addresses and so on.
I think this is just, we're in the first inning, folks. And I think, it's just giving you information. We're going to work on it, and we're going to have your final version for you sometime in June.
Yeah, okay.
So I just want to make sure you're aware that that, that list is going to be different from what you have in front of you.
Yep.
Do you want to discuss the changes with us tonight, or?
No, no, it's purely corrections to the list.
Corrections?
Corrections and one addition that I'm going to bring forth at your next meeting, at your next meeting.
You adding one addition to your fire, regular fireman or reserve?
To the call fire department.
Call fire department. Where's he from?
I'd have to get his address. He currently resides in Lynn, I believe.
Huh?
In Lynn, I believe. I did not bring his information with me tonight for presentation.
You don't have anyone from the hot where we could take that job?
Nobody has come forward. I put out flyers at town meeting and have not received any response. We'll be going through, putting an advertisement in the paper again, and trying to do another recruitment before the summer really picks on.
I, for one, would like the hot people.
As would I. As would I. That provides a much quicker response for us to be able to get the apparatus out.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, would probably be 4D, Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I indicated to you, the previous meetings, we have to go out to the market to do a whole host of financial matters. We've spent a considerable amount of time working on these issues. We need to get our borrowing approvals resolved before the end of the fiscal year so we don't have a deficit when we set the tax rate. And as a result, Mr. Chairman, I have, I think we have some motions for you, two, if I'm not mistaken.
You have two of them, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
Three? Okay. Oh, okay, I see him. I'll start with...
4D?
4D, I'll start with the temporary fire truck, all right?
Let him read it.
Yeah, yeah, I tell him.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote that the maximum useful life of the temporary fire truck housing structure to be financed with the proceeds of a $75,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed, of the town passed April 28, 2018, Article 21, is five years.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
It's the second vote, it says.
Go ahead, do the five years, that's okay. We can do that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote that the water sewer debt shift in the amount of $862,033 be raised on the FY19 tax levy.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous vote.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve...
This is an event request.
Yeah.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the Historical Society...
Could I, before you go forward, could I ask some signatures, Enzo, from you before we, so we stay, can I just, I'll fill in the blanks from the votes, but I just need your signature before you do that. And I need to sign this.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry for the, trying to get the paperwork done.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the Historical Society Victorian Ball, 8/11/18, 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Town Hall. Is this the actual Historical Society, though?
Second.
I think this is what was followed up before. Is it the actual Historical Society? Because that's what the... Let's get this right.
I don't know the answer to that, Enzo.
It just says Victorian Ball. Doesn't say anything. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the Victorian Ball.
Yep, good.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Please note that the, the motion is the Victorian Ball, not Historical Society Victorian Ball. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. I'll see, I'll, I'll... I'll inquire what that's...
Yeah, those are the Victorian dances.
Yes.
Right.
And that's, it's not from the Historical Society. It's the Victorian dances that, you know, you see them march in the parade every year, you know?
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the graduation party. Bob Ianello, 6/2/18, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Bailey's Hill.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous vote.
Okay. The next one. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the Coolidge Middle School Kite Day, Short Beach, 6/8/18, from noon to 2:00 p.m.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Unanimous vote.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the Hot Village Church Blessing of the Pets, Mazrum Park, 3/6/3/18 at 9:00 a.m.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Those in favor, signify?
Aye, aye.
Aye, unanimous vote.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the Hot Sailing Program fundraiser, Town Wharf, 7/28/18, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move that the Hot Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for Men's Softball League Lowlands, 5/7/18 to 9/10/18.
Second.
Discussion? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Ayes have it, unanimous.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the Apollo Club Concert Town Hall, 6/3/18, 3 to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Jeb Fisher?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for Jeb Fisher, video shooter, Forty Steps, 5/16, at 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for Ellingwood Chapel Concert Series, 4/3, 5/13, 6/17, 7/28, 8/25, 9/22, 2018.
Second.
Discussion?
It's 2018, is that right?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. Well, you never know. I mean, they do things in advance.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it wasn't in the packet, I apologize for that. But we need one more financial document signed by the three members of the board. If I could make the motion for you and suggest parliamentary, if somebody just so moves it, and second and go with it, it has to do, we have to take a vote on the water sewer shift debt. So the motion should read as follows. I move that the water sewer debt shift in the amount of $862,033 be raised on the FY19 tax levy. So the, the motion should read as follows. I move that the water sewer debt shift in the amount of eight-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand thirty-three dollars be raised on the FY nineteen tax levy. If you could just say someone move that and someone second.
So move, yep.
Second, and if you get a vote on that.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing seen, none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I could get all three members to sign that and give it back to me, I'd appreciate that.
Do you wanna talk about your committee?
No, but I do wanna talk, we have old.
Old business?
Okay.
Old business, Mr.?
Okay, can I, I just wanna speak about.
Mr. Perel.
Trash. The trash company neglected to pick up three, four streets last week. I think it's unacceptable that they came on Monday instead of the next day.
I think, yeah, the next day was a Sunday, I think. If I'm not mistaken, I thought the next day was a Sunday. Am I correct on that?
They came on a Monday.
They came on a Monday, but the next day was Sunday, right?
They should've came on Saturday.
I thought it wasn't picked up on, I thought a Saturday it wasn't picked up, but I could be wrong, I don't know. Okay.
They're under contract, and, you know, it's, there's no excuse for it. Their, their excuse, I think their excuse was, what I was told, was that the kid ran out of time. Cause there's only one guy in the trash truck, cause we, we went to two days now. And he, he ran out of time and he couldn't pick up the rest of the trash. He neglected, I mean, he did three or four streets, and I got phone calls, I'm sure you guys got phone calls, the town hall got phone calls, I'm sure.
Yes, they did.
And one last thing, that one of my constituents called me and said that her recycling bin was destroyed. She showed me pictures of it. So she asked me what to do. I said, call the town hall and, you know, ask them what to do. And she did. And one of the girls told her that she should call the trash company who claims no responsibility for it. Now, someone's gotta be responsible. They, they shouldn't be throwing their recycling bins around and wrecking them. So I would suggest that you reach out to this woman, I'll give you her name afterwards, and provide her with a recycling bin. I don't know if it's.
I'll be more than happy, just give me your name and number, I'll be more than happy to take care of it.
Okay, that's all. And I think it's imperative that the trash company comes forward and tries to remedy some of the, these things, because it's, it's constant. It happens all the time. So I would appreciate that.
The other thing I would suggest to you, Jerry, is if someone does call and has a trash recyclable destroyed, you should just head out of the public works, bring down a new one for them that day.
Sure. I'll be frank with you, I wasn't even aware of any of this, so I was aware they were late on, I did know that.
The thing is, if they came on.
I didn't know anything about the trash.
They came on a Monday, and that's, and I understand that, but I, no, I don't understand it. They, they came on a Monday, and meanwhile, this, the birds get at the trash. It's all over the street. It makes a mess. People are unhappy about it. And, look, we pay a lot of money to have trash.
Yep. Are you at all interested in trying to find a new vendor?
Sorry?
Are you interested in trying to get a new vendor?
No, you know, again, we could, you know, we can go back to one day. If that's, if that's their excuse, we can go back to one day, but if you're gonna go back to one day, it's gonna be on Thursday, because the reason why we went to two days is because people couldn't, it was on a Friday, so they couldn't make a complaint because the town hall's closed. So we need to have that remedy. We need to have, somewhere along the line, they have to, they have to take care of it, because I don't wanna pick up trash, he doesn't wanna, he doesn't, Richie doesn't wanna, I've, I've picked up all of Bass Point once. So we can't have that. It has to be done, and, you know, we pay them a lot of money. Actually, they were the, I think they were the, I could've sworn they were the highest bidder, but, you know, we want the waste management, cause they have a good reputation. So we need to have, they need to, they need to follow their good reputation.
I, I absolutely be more than happy to reach out to whoever is in charge and have a conversation, if that's all right with you.
Keep having the same.
I heard that, yes.
Problem is, I think you need to come up with a solution. Communication, it's a communication problem. If someone's trash is not picked up, there should be someone standing by and not the public works, because.
It's, it's weekends overtime and everything else.
No, it's four hours overtime.
Right, right.
Called out, so I would have someone from Waste Management standing by from one o'clock with a pickup truck or something like that, or some solution that, that.
Let me, um, I know this is out there, I have, I'll be frank with you, I have not even addressed it in my limited time here, but let me try to reach out to the Waste Management people, let me have a conversation with them, let me see if we can figure something out, but I, I don't even have a solution, other than I, I will reach out to them and let me see what I can do.
Okay, one more, last thing. The, yeah, as some people know, we, we fill out our application for the MVP, Municipal Vulnerability Prepartness Program, and we got it in in time. It's on the, the ladies' desk in, in Boston. I have a private courier that took care of that, that works for D C R. And the, I just, this committee is really good. They're very talented. We got our application in, we have some good ideas. They were throwing some good ideas out there, and I think we're gonna be okay, so I think we'll be part of that program. And if we are, we're gonna get technical assistance, and there's five million dollars to be given away for seawalls, reventments, you know, anywhere, anything that has to do with sea level rising. So they will contact me when it's approved, and I think it's gonna be approved. It really looked good. The whole, the whole application looked really, really well. I think I sent you a copy.
Yes, I got it. I have, thank you. Great, that's good stuff.
Yeah, so that's pretty much it. I'll let, I'll let everybody know when we get approved.
That's why I was asking to talk about it under old business. I'm glad you did, cause it's important that people in town hear that.
And on July, June eleventh, we're gonna have a CRS visit from the I S O, that's the insurance people from FEMA. And we have to have our stuff ready by then. We're having a meeting this Tuesday night for the community rating system, and I encourage people to come and, and give us a hand with it. It's, it's a lot of community outreach work and, and stuff like that, and I think that the more, the better. I mean, the more, there's an awful lot of talented people in the Hahn, and, and hopefully we, we can get a lot of people together to put this whole program together, cause I already talked to the guy from I S O, and he said that he really wants everything in place when he gets here, so he can play golf. On the highest golf course.
I understand that. That's good.
So, Richie, you understand that. Golf is very important. So I encourage people to come Tuesday night to that, to that meeting, so terrific.
That's it?
That's all I got.
I have a couple things. Since the town meeting's over, we need to make up an action item list with the, each, each article that was approved, the amount of money, date sequence.
That's what we started that tonight, well, I haven't got a list, but the borrowing.
Yeah, okay, so that we have a running thing, and then anything left over from last, last year. Very missing.
Yep.
The other thing, we need to start looking at, and Enzo's committee's hopefully on reinforcing the seawalls and taking the seawalls higher and replacing the ones that have been wiped out. So we have a, a list of where the breaks came through, like Castle Road, it was, you know, down there, it was, it came through, you know where, you know exactly where it is, Jerry, coming down through there. Willa Road, it came through down there, and, and so, and hopefully the sand dunes and the dunes, we're gonna raise, raise them up a little bit, and the seawalls we've gotta put in. Especially on Willa Road, where we know there's water coming through with certain locations that are flooding Willa Road.
Yep.
There's one location that's very close to me, that we need to put some barriers down, something that those stairs got wiped up, but it'll prevent flooding of Willa Road. Is there anything else that's held all the way down, with the exception of down by the Keller Greens, but we need to start looking at those and make a list, and hopefully, and we'll give it to that committee. Okay, that's all, that's all I have.
We, we missed an item, Mr. Chairman. Okay, bring your attention to four E?
What's that?
Four E?
Update on activities.
Yeah, we, that's.
That's you.
That's right.
Okay.
We, I didn't want you to adjourn. We had some, a little more work to do here, but I will be brief, I promise, before you adjourn our closing announcements. Next week, I will be meeting with Child's Engineering and Vicki Masson regarding the punch list at the ramp at the wharf. As I've reported to you before, I'm not pleased with that. I am currently holding up payments until I'm satisfied. And I, I won't say much more, because I don't know where this is gonna go.
Can I interrupt here?
Sure.
That was my, this is my point. That was my point earlier, why I did it with reservation, is because the wharf, I tried desperately to get them to come and to call back the bond, because I didn't think that they were gonna do the job properly. And as a result, they didn't. And this, and we, we were forced to sign that contract within, again, thirty seconds. You don't know what's gonna happen, and quite frankly, it was, it was flawed. So we had no recourse on it at the time. And then there was another contract signed that we knew nothing about, we didn't sign it. And that's, these are the things that lead up to this. That's why it's important that I, I'd like to see the stuff before I, before I vote on it, that's all. I think it's, it's only fair to me that I see what's on the contract before the meeting.
One solution I could offer all of you, this is not about contract, but, but, you know, what I see in many communities, now, this community has a tendency to vote on what they get in front of them the night they get it, okay? A lot of communities will do first and second readings. So as Mr., as the chair indicated, you know, it's tough to, there's only three of you, you can't violate the open meeting law, so what, what you could start considering, and it's something for the chair to consider, is a new practice here to alleviate Enzo's concerns, which are legitimate in nature, is that, let's say we have a contract, and it's before you, and it's a first reading, and then you come back two weeks later, and you do a second reading, and where at the second reading, you've had two weeks to read it, digest it, review it, and then at the second reading, you could vote on it, you know, and you're more informed without violating the open meeting law. The only thing you have to be careful about this kind of stuff is it very much slows down the process. And sometimes you do have to make decisions fairly quickly to get things done, so I think we're talking more process than we are communication, and maybe that, maybe we could talk about this another night or something, I don't know, I, I haven't got answers for you, I just know many people do first and second readings to address just what Enzo's talking about.
Depending on the severity too, and the importance, maybe importance better than severity.
You can send the contract to three of us.
I could do that electronically, that is correct.
That's, that's not an open meeting violation.
That's correct.
And I, you know, I look forward to, to an open communication line with, with the university. I think it's important that we do that, so.
I think that, and, and I would defer to the chair.
I already started that.
I think the chair mentioned that tonight, I think, I know, he's spoken to me, and, and, you know, I think the chair is working on that, but he has to be careful what he says because of where this could all go, so he's in a delicate position, and all three of you have been chair at one time or another, so I'm sure you appreciate what he's up against. I, I don't know what else to say. I'd rather not say anything more than that, other than I think your chairman is on top of that, so. If I may proceed, Mr. Chairman, with my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
In any event, so we'll be working, I will be working on that boat ramp. I mean, that was a project, quite frankly, it was done when I showed up, I mean, so I inherited that, but I am doing everything with my, within my power to fix it. And that's about the best I can report to you at this time. I know there's been some issues with regard to Forty Steps and the revenant issues down there and everything. I'm just reporting to you, we have a meeting with D E P in early September to discuss that matter. I've had a dialogue with the town engineers, and we are trying to prepare our presentation to assist us in that matter, but we just, at this point in time, do have a meeting in early September on that.
Get the new state senator involved.
It's on my to-do list. I'm still on, but I promise you, that's something I'm going to do. As a matter of fact, we already talked about that, so, in any event. I, we are on target for Memorial Day, so hopefully, everything's gonna work out that way. Along those lines, we have to date received four applications for summer employment, the summer high school, college kids that we've hired. I worked with the town accountant's office. We're going to be able to hire, I think, all four of them prior to July first, the beginning of fiscal year. We have, I think, enough funds to, they're not all gonna work full-time, but we were able to get some people going, so we have begun the process of our query checks and the employment applications, and we only have four applicants. I can report to you also that, and if anybody's interested, we think we have enough for two more after July first with our budget considerations, so the four we got, we're gonna try to put in work, subject to, you know, query checks, as we historically do every year.
Just to remind you, Mr. Town Administrator, the town sweeper usually does the parade route for the next couple of weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Not every day, but, you know, you can send it out.
They've been, they have been out there, I don't know if you've seen them, they have been doing that as we speak, so.
Not sure if he has time to get the painter out there to paint the street lines.
I, I'll be frank with you, I wasn't aware you did that. I didn't know that. I'll talk to Tim. There's a painting of lines. I did not know anything about that.
And I had occasion to talk to Tim Low, and he said, everything's gonna be ready.
That's what I'm told.
We were both standing there.
Yeah, you were there for that, that's right. I forgot that.
The cemetery's key, that makes sure.
Oh, yeah, they're up there working as we speak, yeah.
Absolutely, and it's your, it's your big thing, and rightfully so.
I'm confident we're gonna be good. I'm confident.
Not only there, but the Davis Memorial.
Yep.
You know, and the Veterans Park.
Yep, yep, they're, they're working on it. Again, if there's something, I mean, we still got, what, a week and a half or so, so I, I think we're gonna be good. So if not, it's on me. Okay, I can report to you that I had negotiations with the golf course. They are up to date on their rental. I want you to be aware of that. We had some damage down there with regard to an electrical line that kinda weaved its way around Bear Pond and behind the golf pro shop there, and around the first green and out to the second tee box. It was damaged in the storm. We're putting that on the FEMA thing. What we have to do, unfortunately, though, we're gonna have to, the line was for irrigation for for the greens, to protect them and everything, so what we have to do now, we're gonna run a line from the, the cart barn off of the second green area across down to where the tee box is for the second hole there, so we do have to spend some money on that, but we're gonna drill, run it there. We're hopeful we won't hit too much irrigation piping, but we're told we can fix that pretty quickly. So that's work that will be, you'll be, see a trench going in the next week or two. I just want you to be aware of it, that's all.
There were some new members on the golf committee appointed this past year, the just-passed man.
Yeah.
And they assumed, and said to the golf committee, that they're only responsible for the golf course, not responsible for anything else. I don't know where that came from.
Oh, no.
No, 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 that's, yeah, they all, just the golf course. I think the town council and you should sit down with the golf committee and explain to them that they're responsible for the entire complex, the billing, the contract, the, cause they're asking questions of the golf committee to look at things, and, you know, they don't, they don't know, because they've never seen the contract.
Right.
And they're responsible for all of that, that lease and, or the recommendation or advisory.
Right.
Okay, but they should, they should give a recommendation on their lease agreement, you know, all the things like that.
I, I have a, I can report on that.
Yeah, oh, you do?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And I apologize, Pete, the chair of the committee, what's his name?
It's great, it's great committee.
I'm trying to remember his last name. Pete Fitzpatrick, isn't it?
Fitzpatrick, yeah.
Yeah. I had, yeah, I, I met with him last week.
Oh, good.
And we spent over, over an hour going over some of the issues you've just raised. I have a second meeting with him tomorrow at nine A M. We are discussing a whole host of issues down there. It's a bit premature for me to really report on anything on that, but the only thing I can tell you is I'm on top of it.
I never realized, I.
Thank you.
I, I was never realized that they didn't know, and they said, no, we just take care of the golf course. That doesn't make sense to me, but.
I will discuss that tomorrow morning, yeah.
That would be good.
But I can tell you what I am pleased about, we're up to date on the rent.
One last thing, Jerry. Parrot Road, I just got a text with some Y's hanging.
I have, news to me.
If it's, they said that the town was supposed to take care of it.
I, you, did you just get a text?
No, I, someone said, they sent me a text, you sent. No, I, it, someone said, they sent me a text, did you send somebody over there tomorrow to look at it and see if it's a town issue or, or a county issue?
I know nothing about it, may, I, I'll be frank with you.
Take a ride over there, if it's a town issue, it's a town issue.
I, I was not at work today, though I was on the phone for probably four hours.
No, that's, that's.
So, uh, they may have already been resolved, for all I know.
I'm telling you that, you know.
Yep.
If they, if, uh, if it's a town issue, it's a town issue, if it's a homeowner's issue, then.
I will look into that first thing in the morning.
And I got one more thing for you.
Okay.
The pothole.
There's plenty of them.
Well, this one's a big one, just going out on the hot by, just past Wilson Road, uh, we, um.
On the hot road?
No, on the hot road, right in, right, you know, just past, uh, what do you have, the, up the Howe Road, no, not going to Howe, um, Little and Hot Road, yeah, just.
Little and Hot Road.
Just past.
The Ha- Little and Hot Road?
Yeah, just past there, it's a, there's a huge, huge pothole, I'm.
Okay.
I hit it, I'm going to bring it down the, can it?
Okay, I will, traditionally, after a selectmen's meeting, we sit the next morning, go over a list of to-dos and we'll.
Yeah, no, I used, for some reason, I just.
We'll get to that.
I meant to remind myself.
Okay, the last thing I mentioned, I'm glad the chief is still here, uh, I sent you guys an email on it, there was some concerns, uh, by some of the members of the board regarding, uh, Wilson, the Wilson, two thirty-five, I think it is, chief, Wilson Road, two thirty-eight, my apologies, uh, Wilson Road, the fire we had up there, um, the chief working with Wayne Wilson did a great job, they tracked down the owners, they boarded it up, they made it safe, at least, uh, for access purposes, um, I, we certainly can't make them repair the building, but we are confident the, uh, the building is secure, the chief went so far is to begin civil proceedings to clean that up, and I think the chief got their attention, so my com- compliments to the fire chief for doing a good job, as well as Wayne Wilson, Wayne did a great job doing that too. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you. Uh, closing announcements, um, if, if I may, I'll handle that unless you guys have more, uh, one thing, one thing we have to remember, actually, the three of us start, but the town too, is that, um, Mr. Perry is part-time, and it's twenty hours a week, and he can only work a certain amount of hours, so, we still have June, July, and August in my mind, that we need him, so, he'll be cutting back his hours per request of the Board of Selectmen through me, if that's okay with the board, um.
May I comment, Mr. Chairman?
No, he can't talk, because what's, what's going to happen is he's going to wind up, I, I want him here, right through the new town administrator, is, is my, is our plan, I'm not, there's nothing new here, all right, go ahead, Mr. Perry, sorry.
Thank you, um, I mean, the chairman's correct, I, it, it's not that I don't want to, the working is fine, it's, it's state law and my pension, and, um, I am concerned, I, I, right now, if I reported you at the hours, you'd probably sit there and go, oh, we get, we, we have some issues here, unless I'm going to work for free, which may happen too, but, um, I know there's a whole bunch of things you all want done, and you're used to having a full-time town administrator, which you should have, by the way, and you will get there at some point, I am beginning to struggle in terms of the to-do list and the things to get done, i- in my opinion, is, is going to be almost impossible to get done within twenty hours a week, number one, and secondly, um, I'm more than halfway through my hours, and I've only worked eight or nine weeks for you, out of twenty-six weeks, so, uh, I'm, I hope that if I can't get to some things for the three of you, you understand that, I'm trying to prioritize things, my, my priorities were to get through town meeting with a balanced budget, we achieved that, I'm working diligently on a D P W superintendent, which hit a major bump today, um, working to get the, um, town administrator up and running for you folks, uh, done some work with Mr. Manning, and the northeastern issue has consumed an incredible amount of my time, and I just can't stop it unless it falls through the cracks, so some of these other things, I hope you have some patience with me, I'm not so sure I can get to it all unless I just work for free, and, quite frankly, I think that's what's going to happen to some degree, so, um, I thank the chairman for commenting about that, because it's something I'm struggling with as we speak.
I have a thought, now the three of us are here, and, that we will sit down and reprioritize to-do lists as time goes on, and.
As an example, tonight, I've got ten to-do lists already from just this meeting.
But we'll reprioritize and then send that to each of the board members, is this okay?
Yep.
I, I, I think we, maybe a weekly update, or, as June approaches, which is in two weeks, I mean, we, we have to make this work.
Yeah, I, look, at, at the end of the day, and I'll be, I've known all of you for forty years each, I'm not going to hurt the town, I'll take care of the town, I mean, if I have to do some extra work, I don't pay, I'm okay with that, I mean, but I don't want to work, you know, another five hundred hours on top of it too, because I still got, I get family commitments, and I've got another position that's permanent even after I leave here, that I don't want to jeopardize that either, so, um, I, I guess my question is, when you're thinking of things you want done, and, and, and stuff like, like, I'll be frank with you, and Richie and I go way back, I don't know if I'm going to have time to get to this issue of wall, sea walls and everything during my tenure, um, it's, it needs to be done, I'm not questioning that, but that could be a considerable amount of time, and, uh.
You, you can do what you can.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
The suggestion I make to you is, you've got two administrative assistants in there, bring one in for the meeting session, she, she can make notes and list, and then, uh, work, work, you know, comp time so that she has, uh.
Well.
Friday morning off.
That, that's not necessary, we, we, they look at the tape, they, I come every morning, I get the, we, we, that's not necessary, we deal with that, that's already taken care of, I think the bigger issue is just some of these to-dos, and, uh.
I don't, I don't call you to see.